Okay, so our board members are all here, so I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. I know from just a couple of comments that when we call a meeting "special meeting", some people worry and think that something dramatic is going to happen. That may or may not be the case, but I don't think it's the case tonight. But "special meeting" simply means a meeting that was not scheduled on our Board of Ed adopted calendar. So that's all it means. It means we put in an extra one. All right, so has everyone had a chance to review and approve the, or review the agenda?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Thanks, Mandy. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Gretchen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Comments from the public. Lucille is taking a much-needed break from us tonight, and Gretchen has volunteered to read the comments from the public. Did we receive any, Gretchen?
We did. We received a bunch, so I will read them, and maybe we'll read some at the end of the meeting as well.
Yeah, we do have to get through some business tonight, and some of our staff may be on a tighter schedule than the rest of the board members. So I'm gonna, let's say, why don't we try about 10 minutes of public comments now, and we will finish the rest at the end of the meeting. And as a reminder, public comments should be no longer than two minutes. And again, we don't respond as board members to individual public comments, but we do follow-up and discussion as appropriate. Okay, Gretchen?
Okay. Be patient with me, please. I'm reading off of my phone, and I want to make sure I got them all taken as I'm marking them off.
Sure.
Okay, so Board of Education, first and foremost, we greatly appreciate the amount of work and preparation that everyone has put into the start of the school year. We have two young children, both attending Miller Driscoll. Our older child has quickly adapted to the virtual environment, and while missing the social aspect of school, is resilient and making the best of the situation. Our concern is with our younger child, who is entering kindergarten with an IEP. For any kindergarten, starting school in this way is likely very difficult. However, for a child with a condition, too much screen time triggers negative emotional and physical reactions. The hill is just too steep to climb. Observing the past four days, we have witnessed behavior that is not typical in our young child, and know the virtual instruction is harming more than helping. It has been simply heartbreaking to watch. We support the school district making decisions to uphold the wealth, health, and well-being of students and the broader community. However, more planning and/or resources are needed for those students to require in-person IEP support and the positive benefits that come, that come with the structure of in-person teaching. We know this is challenging situation. We thank you for our opportunity. You're up, thank you for the opportunity to hear our concerns. Ryan and Sarah Fasano on Kellogg Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is from Jennifer Morello. Dear members of the Board of Education, I support the return to sports, given proper precautions are in place, and both students and parents accept the possibility of a student being removed from a team or activity if they do not abide in good faith to the precautions. Sports participation, in my opinion, supports learning by giving students an outlet for their physical energy, encouraging teamwork, and reinforcing lessons in goal-setting, and maintained hard work. However, in this precarious time, I think the value of in-person school attendance outweighs competitive sports. I would hate to see the increase of COVID cases arise from sports participation, which results in Wilton's need to switch fully to remote. I'm gonna reread that. Which results in Wilton's need to switch fully to remote learning. Thank you for your time and dedication to the Wilton's Public Schools, Jen Morello. The next one is from Sharice Hayes. I appreciate all of the hard work going into our first week of school during these challenging times. As a parent of a kindergartner at Miller Driscoll, I am asking the school to consider keeping the shortened school days for all remote learning days. I don't believe a full-day remote would be beneficial at this age level emotionally or academically. Prolonged school time at this age feels inappropriate. Thank you for your consideration, Sharice Davidson.
Thank you.
Okay, this is from Doug Davison. Sharice didn't give me an address, so I'm not sure if it came from the spouse. I'm writing to strongly recommend that the remote days for kindergarten remain on the shortened day schedule. It is too much to ask of a five-year-old to sit in front of a screen until 3:00 PM. In addition, it is clearly not good for such a young child's development to be in front of a screen for so long. Our son and the rest of the children are clearly done by 12. It is a struggle to get them to even sit until 1:00. I don't understand why kindergarten students would be treated the same as older children. Lastly, these remote days with young children require at least one parent's full attention the entire time, so it is of no benefit for working parents to continue the remote learning days until 3:00. Kind regards, Doug Davison, Nod Hill Road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have time for another one?
Yeah, we're doing fine.
Oh, okay. Dear Board of Ed members, for the meeting today, could you please discuss the hours for remote learning days for Miller Driscoll students? Overall, this week has been going pretty well for my son, who is in second grade. However, I did notice how tired he got by the time remote classes were over. I am now concerned that when remote school expands to a full-day schedule, it would be even more so difficult for young kids to stay focused, engaged. The schedule is, the schedule as it was this week comprehensively covered most important subjects, and I don't believe kids can handle any more content. I would rather that they focus on substance, not endless hours in front of a computer. Please consider keeping short day schedule for remote days with potentially offering non-mandatory curriculum extended day option for those who need to have their children engaged in school through the afternoon. Thank you for your attention on this matter. Regards, Ina Doliner.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, growing up in Wilton, I went through the Wilton Public School system first through 12th grade. Education was primary reason for my parents moved, moved my, reason my parents moved my family to Wilton many decades ago. After living in Los Angeles for 15 years, my wife and children moved back to Wilton nearly three years ago for the same reason, the education system. I am writing as a proud parent of two incredible, incredible boys, a seven-year-old, second grade, and a five-year-old kindergarten. My wife, Megan, also recently wrote to you, as well as the Miller Driscoll administration. My intention with this note is to echo her concerns. I am also extremely worried for them at this point, in particular, my youngest. For up to three mornings upon waking up, I have witnessed my son cry and constantly explain he hates school and doesn't care. This is extremely concerning, due in part that this is the same child that couldn't wait to get to school since he started daycare and pre-K for the last several years. He loves the interaction of other students, the attention he receives from his teachers, and the overall time spent in an establishment, established learning environment. Children are not wired or conditioned naturally for staring at a computer screen to learn for multiple hours a day, if at all. My oldest, while not preferring remote learning, is managing, but I'm still concerned for his well-being and future. He's holding on by very thin string and can't wait to return to the classroom. I can go on and on about what I perceive to be the risks and repercussions of a remote learning environment, but I'll keep it short. A five-year-old child should not be taught remotely. This is their foundation year of education. They require in-person to maximize their potential. We, as parents, educators, a community, cannot expect to hold kindergarteners to the same level of scrutiny or ability to any other grade level. They should be assessed and scheduled as independent group and held to the standards of the requirements of a five-to-six-year-old requires. I am asking the Board of Ed to consider teaching at least kindergarten, if not K-2, in the school five days a week. Virtual learning should be an opt-in choice solution for those who are not comfortable sending their children to school in person. But for those parents who choose to send them, the option should be available full-time, especially for the youngest learners who require it. We are failing our future generations if we don't take swift action now. I can't imagine we are the only...
Gretchen, Gretchen, we've gone over quite a bit on that one, so thank you.
Okay, Ray Erickson, Wilton class of 98. Good evening, I'm the mother of two Miller Driscoll-aged sons, one in kindergarten and one in second grade. They are both intelligent, strong-willed, social, and active kids who generally thrive in a group or classroom environment. We've experienced nothing but success and positive growth over the last several years of elementary school for my older child and preschool for my younger one. They've both always enjoyed a love and appreciation of learning. However, since the world went a bit sideways last spring, and especially these last three days since we began the new school year with e-learning, I'm seeing a dangerous and extremely alarming trend in both their behavior as it pertains to anything having to do with school. My heart is heavy as I write this email, and my hope is that my message will resonate and possibly sparks some positive change for our youngest of our early learners during this unprecedented uncertain time. The initial and abrupt shift to remote learning last March brought a period of novelty and excitement that lasted roughly three weeks for my older son in first grade at the time, but it completely fizzled out overnight for my preschooler. His joy and happiness at seeing his schoolmates and teachers and learning new and interesting things came, each day came to a screeching halt and left him wanting for so many things. Because there are so many unknowns right now, and because there are many things that are subject to regular change, we weren't able to celebrate his exit from preschool and his looming entrance into kindergarten the way we did for his brother. We didn't have the opportunity to help him fall asleep at night with stories of how much fun he'll have sharing the bus with his brother, playing and learning in his new classroom, or sharing lunch in a big kid cafeteria with his new friends. The confidence that we had in telling his older brother two years ago that he would be surely reading like a champ by year's end was all but wiped out completely. We have no idea what he'll accomplish this year on an academic level. We only know that we have a bright child who's eager to learn and to be taught, but who absolutely cannot do so by way of a computer screen and headphones, both of which are foreign and objectionable to him. He is a child who fully embraces and requires the caring, patient, and targeted physical energy of the amazing humans who are uniquely cut out to, and therefore choose to teach our young children. Neither my husband nor myself are that person, and unfortunately, we are not in a position of being able to teach him in, from home ourselves, even if we were. The above being said, days one through three of remote learning have proven somewhat successful, if not a bit too long and a bit too boring at times for our second grader. I applaud all of the work that has gone into everyone...
Gretchen, Gretchen, again, this, this letter's a little long, too, and I let it go over a little bit, but thank you.
Okay, it actually, sorry, this is, actually continues for a very long time. And this is from Megan Erickson, 11 Eakins Lane.
Okay, thank you. How many others are there? Because again, I wanted to sort of, we can, we, there's public comment at the end of the meeting as well.
Yeah, you know what, we can do the rest at the end of the meeting, because...
Okay.
Yeah, a couple more.
All right, all right, thank you. And some of the discussion tonight may, may address some of the concerns that we've heard.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve it?
No move.
Thanks, Mandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ruth. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, now to the substance of the meeting from the staff. Review and discuss the Wilton Public Schools' update on reopening. Principals and Director Special Ed. So Kevin, if you could lead us off?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for joining us again for another Board of Ed meeting. Thought it'd be important tonight to hear from the principals on the first, now four days of school. So why don't we begin with Dr. O'Donnell, and then we'll just kind of work our way sequentially in order down to Mrs. Kuhn, our primary school principal. Go ahead, Bob.
Sure, so I'm honored to report on behalf of our Wilton High School Warriors. And you know, what I would report to the board this evening is that, you know, our, our faculty was certainly elated to see students back in school, albeit in the virtual and remote learning environment. I would say that some of the jitters that teachers felt about these challenging times and learning new technology and preparing to teach in the hybrid environment were just naturally reduced when they saw the students and they began to interact with them. So interfacing with the students certainly was a highlight of the week, and it brought some spirit and some levity to the teachers. So it was very powerful to see that. During advisory on Monday and throughout the week, we've been working on, you know, building connections with students and working on some SEL, social emotional learning activities, and really just supporting students as they transition back to school. I think we all need to remain cognizant that, you know, students haven't been, you know, really engaged in a long time over the summer, and, you know, it's been a long time since March 11th when we all met out, went out. So a lot of connectedness activities in advisory and also in the classroom, which is the really important fabric for, you know, supporting our kids and our teachers. Speaking of our teachers, you know, they continue to be amazing, and they're resolved to absorb, to learn, and to master what they can about new technologies, to try to use them effectively, including, you know, Schoology and Zoom and the document cameras and sound fields, and, and now the third screen, just trying to integrate all these technologies. And, you know, I would describe this as both an initial success, and it's definitely a remaining challenge for us that we have to face together. And I think that, you know, this quest to integrate and master these technologies and these devices, although formidable, you know, we will, will work through it. Our teachers made a lot, a lot of progress this week. You know, learning this new platform, I think, will also present some challenges to our students. So, you know, a note to our students and to our Wilton High School parents, you know, I encourage you to continue to be patient, to also be persistent, and to help each other out, which we all do. Our teachers and staff are right there with you, with our students and our families. Regarding just health and safety and hygiene, the school is in far better shape this week than we were last week. I think that this week has helped us really make some progress with safety measures and signage, plexiglass barriers where necessary, and then all the protocols that we need to follow with that. And again, we're really looking forward to this, but with 650 teenagers in the school next week at the same time, we just all need to be mindful that we all share collective ownership of, you know, how we want to move, how we want to learn, how we want to support each other. You know, speaking on behalf of the teachers, you know, most of them are really, really eager to, you know, see the students in person. And then there are others, just to be real honest and to name it, you know, there are some that just remain very concerned about their health, you know, and, you know, just worry about being in a building with so many people. So that's going to be an adjustment, and we're just going to have to continue to support our teachers and our staff through that. So, you know, as an admin team, you know, our strategy has been to support our staff really by providing, you know, ample dedicated time for the teachers to prepare, to learn these technologies, get ready for next Tuesday. We have differentiated the support, you know, from our team, from our instructional leaders as a whole, and also from our technology ILs, who have just been unbelievable and intrepid in their quest to, you know, help and support our teachers. And then another shout-out just to our library media specialists, who've been really providing support to the teachers. And, you know, I think overall, we definitely have rounded a corner. We feel a lot better about it, but some teachers are just struggling a little bit still with Schoology, which is natural, and having some trouble letting go of Google Classroom, which they felt really fondly of. So, you know, that remains a growth area for us, but we're all working together, you know. We've got a certain resolve, this Wilton High School staff, and again, we've made great progress. I'd like the school community to know that you can, you can expect yet another back-to-school letter from me tomorrow, in addition to two videos. They will contain the full principal's message and a principal's corner with student body president Ben Kesselman, which everybody will be excited to see, and then all of the PSAs, these public service announcements around health and safety protocols in the building. Those will be sent out tomorrow in two video clips. They're all done, and my letter is nearly done. And I, what I want to do is just request and implore the parent community to, you know, sit down with your students and review these videos thoughtfully together at some point over the weekend, so that we're all ready for a really smooth start on Tuesday. So that's a report on behalf of our Wilton High School Warriors. Thank you.
That's quite a lot, Bob, thank you. Can you make sure that the Board of Ed members, even if we're not high school parents, get the, the videos that you send out with the PSAs by the kids?
I will absolutely do so.
All right. Questions or comments from the board?
So Bob, you guys are ready to have students on Tuesday?
We will be ready for students on Tuesday morning.
Awesome. And what's the substitute situation? I know there was some emails back and forth about the different subs.
Well, I already wrote in my letter tomorrow, but it's worthwhile sharing. You know, overall, Mandy, staffing-wise, we're in good shape. We did not have, we had a, you know, we had a resignation, we had one retirement, and then a couple leaves of absence, and when I say a couple, two, based on the COVID situation and people making decisions probably for the right reason. So I'm pleased to report to the board and anybody who's listening that we've done some good hiring over the last couple weeks. We have filled our vacancies with certified teachers, which is important for you to know. To be fully transparent, we still do have two science sections that we need to fill, and we have a social study section. So we've done some training this week with our in-house building subs to get them trained up in Schoology, and Dr. Corn, who's very adept with technology, has been lining up, you know, assignments through the instructional leaders for the students. So while not yet ideal, we're in a, we're in a better place, and, you know, we've got some good hires in place to fill those, those few resignations and leaves, leaves of absence.
Awesome, thank you.
That's good, that's good news to hear, thanks. Other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Bob.
Okay, I think I'm up. First, I just want to do a microphone check, I have an external mic that I'm using, and make sure it's better than my laptop. So far, so good.
Yep.
We can hear you.
All right, good. Well, good evening, and thanks for the moment, try to celebrate some of the wonderful work at Middlebrook here. It's been a great week of growth for us as well. I'd love to piggyback on some of the things Dr. O'Donnell said relative to that, the things that we've seen in our building that we want to celebrate. I'll, I'll lead with some of the growth areas that we're working on, some of the challenges. And one is the, the many technologically, technological challenges we've had this week, really first of all, in a remote world. And it's, I would say that it's very hard for probably especially our sixth-grade students and their parents, that population that are new to Middlebrook, that don't quite know the operations of how things are, and it's just a difficult initiation for them this week, and trying to get them to understand that this will get better in time is something that we're trying to encourage and coax throughout the week. And I think our approach has been that, you know, we had a pretty good day Monday, and then Tuesday was a little better, and Thursday was better than Tuesday. Each day, we've been building on the week and the day before, so hopefully, parents are starting to see that as well. As we went on the dirt throughout the week, even working to communicate a plan B when things don't work, whether that's connections or technology at school or at home, what, what can kids do, what can parents do to help support their children? And I think we got better as the week went on as well. The, I think there were a lot of questions from our parent community about attendance and a fear that, you know, we're taking attendance and kids are being, you know, got a black check next to their, their name based on not being there. Like Bob just said about, or I, I too, I'm going to write a letter for tomorrow for yet another welcome back to school moment, but it's really to, to clarify that a little bit for families to understand that, I, I think my approach is, we want to make sure parents know that, we know you're not in school, that your child is not in school, and I think it's good that we're identifying, that we're noticing they're not there. And I think the assumption on our part is that it likely was a technological glitch or some sort of connectivity issue, and we recognize that, and we want to make sure that the children are feeling connected to staff. And to that end, I think that as we've seen improvement each day, and every day has gotten a little better, I've just been amazed and very pleased with the extraordinary exhilarating, extraordinarily, it's really of our staff, but also of our kids, in recognizing that, yep, that didn't work today, but it, I know how to do it, I know how to then get into a Zoom class. And while things necessarily wouldn't work the way they were planned, people were so great at bouncing back and recognizing that, you know, the, the follow-up would work, and there would be a bump, and that's okay. I just see staff members going above and beyond, like Dr. O'Donnell was saying at the high school, and, and really just making meaningful connections with students. I walked in on a classroom today where a teacher and a couple of students were actually talking about the passing of Tom Seaver, and then they were talking about connections they were making, that their parents had, oh, I grew up watching Tom Seaver. And that's just an example of the sort of things that were happening across the building, but just doing a wonderful job of showing their passion and, and commitment to kids and making sure that they are connected as best they can in a remote setting. And all along the while, just really excited to be able to see them in person, at least half of our population, on Tuesday. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight really was how supportive our parent community has been. I guarantee you, every email that I've received has led with a statement that, thank you so much for all the work you're doing. Please make sure you tell your staff how much we appreciate the effort and the energy. And everybody that's writing to say, hey, this is the thing we're working on, or the problem I have, or the, even the question I have, it's also filled with tremendous support for what is going on in the building, what we're trying to do to help the families, especially in a remote setting. So I too will have a couple of PSAs and videos attached to this letter tomorrow, so hopefully that will answer some of the particulars to Middlebrook that, that folks are asking, but it's also a little reminder to make sure that we're doing our part to be safe, just like Dr. O'Donnell's high school level. So it's a nice good reminder, but again, a last minute, we're so excited to see the kids in person, can't wait. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Jory. I don't think you imagined this would be the environment for taking on the role as principal, having to, having to welcome people remotely. Are you, just my question would be, do you have staffing vacancies or challenges to fill in terms of your staff?
We do, and Maria Coleman's been so good about being a great partner in that and making sure that we are covered at least short-term for folks that are missing right now, with it between a, a last-minute resignation, another request for leave, that are, you know, things that we obviously couldn't have planned for. But it also led to, again, with thanks to Maria, making sure that our subs are trained and understanding Schoology, at least on a rudimentary level, and to the LLC folks that have been just going above and beyond, making sure that folks understand how the technology works, trying to align people that are working remotely themselves with our subs in our building. So we have four positions that are being covered by our building subs at this point to start the year, and at least one of those positions are posted. The other is something that we have to do a long-term sub for.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments for Jory?
Jory, thank you so much for the update, and I'm just going to ask the same question. All right, is yours, is Middlebrook ready to have students there on Tuesday?
We can't wait for the students on Tuesday.
Yay!
It's, if, you know, if there was a way to get them all in the building safely, we'd love to do that, but it's, it's, we, I, I have been doing walkabouts, as you might imagine, every day, like I think most of us have been doing, and Deb has even done. And I think everybody's clamoring to finally get to the point where they get to see kids in person, and honestly, we can't wait.
Perfect.
Jory, I know some of our teams were rotating to try to see how the teachers were able to hook up class to class. Do you have a report back yet as to how that went?
Jen, I missed the first part of that, something about rotating and how the teachers are doing, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, do you know how like the, our kids are going to stay put, but the teachers are going to rotate?
Yes. Yeah, so really, Monday and Tuesday was as much about getting them familiar and comfortable with that whole process in a remote setting, and really mostly today and tomorrow, this is rotating through the building. And, you know, the idea of disconnecting, reconnecting, how long does that take? Meanwhile, the child may just have to click out of a Zoom and into an X one, so they're there and ready and waiting for the staff member. So they're, they're trying to create, you know, back in the Teaching 101 days, they create sponge activities, something where the kids know they have a do-now, they can get started on, sort of thing. But it's going to take a few minutes for the teacher to get from one room to the next, but at the same time, it's, you know, again, with thanks to our parent community and recognizing that it's, it's going to take a little patience to start. We're going to need to get through a couple of those bumps along the way, but they're practicing it today, they're getting a little better as they do it each time, but I think so far, so good. And again, today was better than the day before, Wednesday, of course, we had that brownout for a while, it was a little different, but I'm kind of comparing today to Tuesday, being much better, but there was a lot more experimentation today from the teachers actually moving, not just spending the whole time in their own room.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Jory, I have one more question, and I guess this is for Bob and Jen as well. How are you going to do specials? So like Jim, the kids at home, the kids there, these specials, like how are you going to do, and I guess for everyone? How are you going to do specials? So like Jim, the kids at home, the kids there, these specials, like how are you going to do, and I guess for everyone? Could you just give us an idea?
Sure. So for the most part, our stride teachers, stride is what we call our specials, students turning risk into diverse experiences. That's what stride stands for, for those of you that don't know. But the stride teachers will be going to the teams and actually holding class in the classrooms. So the kids are obviously not moving. And when it comes to a, a PE teacher, depending upon the lesson for the day, they may be in the classroom, but more than like, if the weather permits, they're going to get them up and out of the building and doing some sort of activity outside in the classroom. But
For the kids at home, how is that, how is that going to affect the kids at home?
So depending upon the activity, there may be an activity that they're expected to go and do some, some sort of physical activity themselves, but it's going to be after some sort of a lesson that they're given.
Got it.
So today, by way of example, I have a walk into a room where Mr. Tagano was meeting with some of his kids and he was talking a little bit about that, what the, what the class is going to look like and that. Just making sure the kids are not only familiar with the cadence of the class, but also understanding that on a given day too. If it's raining out, we can't go outside, it'll be more of a classroom activity.
Got it.
Gretchen, did you have a?
I did. Actually, that was one of my questions was about the stride. But also the, in your letter, are you going to include the pickup and drop off? Like, is it? I think Cider Mill is breaking it out by, by alphabet and time. I'm honestly, as a parent, not even remembering what I'm supposed to do to drop off. I mean, if it's anything different than what, you know, just waiting in the line and the two lines that move into one line to drop off.
Yeah, it is, it is a little different, to be honest. We're, we're trying to stagger at the times based on last name. And, you know, I, I should just put the caveat out there that we recognize, you know, the Jean's family may have more than one building they have to get to. And if it's the same time, we don't expect you to have figured out how to be two places at once. So obviously there's going to be some flexibility there, but if, if we can get the community to kind of follow those time slots, we're hoping that there'll be less and less congestion. Because at this point, we're expecting most of the families to be driving, based on the surveys that were, went out earlier this summer. So we want to try to spread it out as best we can. And I would imagine School Road and Christine Illinois Way in our neighborhood anyway, is going to be quite packed.
Yeah, I thought so. And I, so I just want to like make sure that, I guess, all the teachers, if, if it's going to be a staggered time, just put it in that letter again, because, you know, I, I know it's somewhere, but it would be nice just to have it right on the top of the pile.
I, in fairness, I do feel like, you know, I apologize to parents for the, some of the redundancies that are in there, but I think that some of the letters I've received from parents are asking for that. Please tell me again, it's okay. And so we plan to do that in the letter. I'm afraid it's, it's getting longer every time I think of something.
Jory, one more question. So are kids changing classrooms at all at Middlebrook?
Yes, there are some that have been changing classes. So it will depend. Students that play an instrument, for example, will actually be going to the auditorium so they can be properly spaced apart from each other. Or if the children are going out for a gym class, for example, they're going to move and get out of the building. Obviously with all of the protocols that we've been talking about for months now about properly spaced from each other. And then children with specific program needs that require smaller settings, that sort of thing, they're, they're going to move as well.
So will those desks be cleaned in between children? Is there a protocol for that?
Yes. So that in, in some cases, it'll be a case where the desk is dedicated just to one child and no one else will sit in it. In other cases where it's a desk that's going to be used by, you know, the next group coming in, that it'll be cleaned in between.
Okay. And then along the same question of absentee, I know there's been a lot of, you know, people being freaky, you mentioned that about their, people being concerned about their children being absent. Can we have a little bit leeway of the first week maybe with tardiness, since we have kids coming at different times? Can you just put that in your letter that maybe you'd be a little understanding about kids getting there due to the, the traffic and the circles?
Sure. You know, I, I think that's kind of a given anyway, in terms of typically the first couple of days of buses, buses are coming in late based on congestion anyway. So it's, it's a given that that's regular practice, I think, across the district anyway.
All right, great.
Your, your point is well taken that to reinforce that message that folks know, I, I'm not, it's the kind of sidebar note here is that, you know, there, there are some kids and/or families who wish this had an impact on it. It doesn't. And, and for the folks that it really, they, they're worried about it, it's, it's not an issue at all. So
Right, great.
At this point, it's just making sure we're, we're noting who's in the building and who's in the building safely.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Jory.
Welcome.
Go ahead, Dr. Falcone, you're up.
All right. First, I want to apologize. I'm on my phone and clearly do not have a steady hand. My laptop decided to throw a Zoom temper tantrum. It's had enough. It's trying to send to me a message. So anyhow, I just want to say that having your children back, whoever's listening out there, has been such a joy. And all the planning and time spent has all been worth it to have them sort of back. Can't wait till next week when we really have them back in, inside of our building. But, you know, Kevin had asked us to share some kind of like highs and, you know, what went well, what do we need to work on? And by far, having teachers with our kids was the highlight. And you know, just hearing their laughter, their amazing problem solving, the way that they are able to come up with different ways of navigating this technology to make the new learning environment work for them is just phenomenal. So you know, we may be worried here and there about how this is all going to work and they really, I think they've got it. And it's, it's been something to really watch it all happen. And, you know, more than anything, they're just having fun connecting with each other, connecting with their new teachers. And it's, it's just been a pure joy to be back there and watching that. So I can only imagine what it's going to be like having them in the building. And the building's really set up. You know, I cup, I lost track of the different board meetings. I know at one point in time, we were just worried about the setup and we have kind of passed that moment. We have all the sanitation, we've got our signs. There's a few little odds and ends coming in on the Sunday over the weekend. But we're in really good shape, I feel like. And I think, you know, for the most part, you know, the staff feel comfortable with the physical place. I know that there's always going to be the worry about what's it going to be like when we have more people in the building. But I think the want of having the kids back is going to outweigh that. It's just going to be, you know, focusing on how do we keep the students socially distanced? I mean, they're young. It's hard to keep everybody separate. We're going to be so excited to be back together again. And so that first orientation week for the hybrid week, it's, is going to be really spent going over a lot of the protocols and what does it look like and trying to set that new normal with them. But in a nice, friendly, comfortable, safe manner. And I think that's important just to, for you guys all to know that it'll be done in a very kind and caring way. So it's not to scare anybody. We are going to resend home that PSA, the safe at school, just to go over the signage and things like that. In a smaller environment with you guys at home, we will absolutely be doing little snippets of that here and there, but it wouldn't hurt for you guys to do that as a family as well. So I encourage you guys to do that. I will send the copy home again with you guys. I want to thank the families. The emails have been so thankful for our teachers and I really appreciate that. They've worked unbelievably hard. I know Kevin was in our building just this morning and I know he must have felt really good walking around, seeing his staff and just feeling just good about all of their problem solving. And even though, you know, yesterday was a tough day, we had, it, it's not one, any one particular thing. It's a combination of, you know, Wilton's kind of Wi-Fi. It's not really necessarily our Wi-Fi. I think it's kind of like different families Wi-Fi possibility, different connectivity to different platforms. It's not necessarily school ag issue. It's, it's just, it's a lot of different things that we have going on that our tech team has been really working hard. They've been in our building every morning, problem solving with us. We have a lot of logging in suggestions that we have. We still have a lot of parents that are inadvertently logging on that are causing some issues. We have some suggestions that we really need people to adhere to in the, in the emails that have gone home from Fran and myself. And I think we'll slowly get there and, and kind of work through these issues. But overall, I think today was a much better day than yesterday was and looking forward to more of an improvement even tomorrow and going into next week. So any specific questions you guys have for Cider Mill?
Before I open it up to, to others, just want to ask you the same question about staffing.
Yes.
You know, in terms of, do you have any vacancies to fill or are you okay?
No, we just filled, we had a part-time music person that we were filling and we, she's been on-site the last couple of days and fully integrated into our staff. So we're thrilled about that. And her teammates have been wonderful getting her up and running with all of the school ag and what have you. You know, every, like along with everybody else, just in trying to work through what it looks like to have a sub in the, in, in rooms, when and if that happens. But you know, we've got a lot of teacher brain power on problem solving, what that's going to look like going forward. So.
Okay. And then maybe after we hear all the principals, we can ask a few more questions about subs and their availability. Any questions for, for Jen and Cider Mill?
Jen, same question. So you guys are ready to have students, right?
Yes, we are.
Great.
We are thrilled and very much so, looking forward to having kids back in our building.
So fun.
Yeah.
Jen, are you guys ready to have kids at home and kids in the building? Have you guys figured out all the kinks?
I wouldn't say all the kinks, but we're going to get there somehow, some way. We're going to get there. And the teachers have been working really, really, really hard with all of the tools in the building and playing around within their teams to figure out all of devices and screens and figuring out different ways of thinking about the different parts of the lesson to make all of it work. So we'll be making adjustments along the way, but we've really made use of all of this time that we've had for collaborative professional learning time and we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I'm going to like take my camera off so I don't make anybody seasick here, okay?
Yeah, when you appeared sideways, it was a bit weird.
I know. I'm so sorry. I had my phone up thinking that was the right way. And then I got all the text messages, so.
Go ahead, Mrs. Kuhn. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going last tonight. It's so weird. Usually I'm the first one out of the gates to talk about the littles. So my, my update is going to be in three parts. So first part is huge credit to our youngest students. So I want to give a shout out to the kids. They have worked so hard over the last four days. They've logged on to, you know, see their teacher and their classmates again. They came ready to participate in all kinds of activities, getting to know you activities, community building activities, and have even been doing reading, writing and math within these first four days. They've also participated in specials. I zoomed into quite a few classes today and saw brain breaks and all kinds of amazing things going on. And even Mr. Johnson playing music and dancing all around to the point where he was like, kids, I just need a second. I have to catch my breath. So that was incredible. The next part is I want to give a shout out to my teachers. They were referred to in one of the first letters for this meeting as amazing humans because they do choose to teach our youngest learners. And I have to say, they are amazing. They rose to the occasion this week as they greeted their class and their new students. They came prepared not only to build that sense of community, but to connect with all of the kids as well as they could via Zoom. They engaged them no matter what it took. And there was even a, one of the teachers dressed up in a hot dog costume. Spaghetti in a hot dog bun, which is a great story about, you know, celebrating everyone's unique features and, and, and all the things that make everyone different. So again, if you're going to dress up in a hot dog bun, knowing that most of the parents are at the other end even watching you, I, I give them a lot of credit. They all had props, visuals, all kinds of brain breaks, all kinds of movement breaks, you know, weaved in throughout the shortened day. And then the, the big shout out too goes to the parents because as you know, these little ones can't just log on and do this all themselves. And so our parents supported their kids as they zoomed with the teachers, stepped back when they thought it was appropriate, helped kids with activities when we tried to have them step away from the screen for at least a little bit during this week. I just want everyone to know, we realize that even on the shortened days, we have a lot of parents concerned about screen time. We also are concerned about screen time. We're going to continue to monitor it as we go into next week and into the hybrid model. I talked with Kevin earlier in the week about this and we talked about having everyone experience each day. So we've all had four days and after tomorrow, five days of shortened full remote days. Next week, we'll have onsite full days with the kids who are in the hybrid as well as experiencing an on a full remote day in the hybrid. And then we're going to send a survey out to parents to get some feedback from them because again, we are hearing from parents about screen time. We'll continue to get feedback from our teachers. They're, you know, they're monitoring it as we go along the way. And then we'll make adjustments as needed. But yeah, the kids are little and, you know, the teachers will also, as we move into next week, there will be other things that will break up the day. Shortened days don't have a, a full lunch, although we have a snunch, as I've talked about before. But there will be other things that will help to break up the day and they are monitoring it and they are trying to get kids into small groups again, as they get to know them. So we understand it's a concern. I also want to give a shout out, just like Jory and, and Jen and, and Dr. Bob did. We are getting amazing feedback from parents and they, they could not be more complimentary of the staff. It's, it's incredible. It's incredible what they can do on a Zoom. And the fact that we have five and six and seven-year-olds who know how to turn on their speaker view. You know what? They're doing it. They're doing it. So, so congrats to everyone. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You heard a lot of concerns and questions specifically addressed to kindergarten level. Can you speak a little bit about your perceptions and what the teachers are saying about the kindergarten experience?
Sure. So I just want to talk a little bit about kindergarten, even when we're in school and not in a global pandemic. So kindergartners come into school and I'm going to tell you that it's a long day for kindergartners, no matter what. So a lot of them are kind of falling asleep by the end of the day. Some might be crying because they miss their moms or their dads. So even on the days where the kindergartners are in school with us, it is a very big adjustment for them. So going to the big school, it is exhausting. It's, it's, you know, again.
Fair point, yeah.
They're very tired and we try to encourage parents to say on, in a normal time, don't do after-school activities and all of that. So as you can imagine, trying to be engaged on a screen, you know, where you can't talk to your friend, where you don't have the same opportunities for playing with your friends or doing centers with your friends. You can, you can play, but you're doing that, you know, in your own home. So definitely for kindergarten, it's, it's difficult. I would say it's difficult for all of the kids. And when we talked with the teachers, you know, they said, yeah, you can see we get to a certain point. So again, they're weaving in all kinds of breaks, but it is a lot of screen time. And when you think about little kids, you know, when you're not in a global pandemic, most parents do limit, you know, time kids spend on the computer, time kids spend watching TV, you know, looking at video games, those kinds of things. So, so we're watching it and it, it is definitely a concern.
Okay. And the board will probably be meeting next week. So we will, we'll hear an update and I know you're going to monitor it. But what are other board members' questions or concerns?
Kathy, if parents decide that it's just too much screen time and we're not ready to make a decision yet, are they going to be penalized if they allow their child to log out?
No. Again, we, we want kids to log in and there is this attend, you know, we want kids to attend. But if kids need a break, it's sort of like, you know, like I encouraged parents last year when we were March through June, you have to do what's best for your family. You have to do what's best for your children. And it's like, and then we'll, you know, try to log back in again. It, it breaks my heart when I hear that, you know, kids are, I hate school or It breaks my heart when I hear that, you know, kids are, "I hate school," or, "Do I have to go to Zoom school again today?" You know, again, that is, you know, it's a small group of people who are reaching out to me more, you know, more and more as the days go on. So I think that's hard, but I think, you know, we're not going to say, "Oh my gosh, we're going to penalize you for the whole day because you've, you know, because you've needed to log out." We also, I'm encouraging parents to reach out to the teachers. So if your child is having a particular difficulty, then reach out to the teacher. We have a lot of support staff, we have a lot of ways that we can, you know, even put kids into breakout rooms and, you know, have smaller groups and do that more frequently throughout the day with some of the kiddos, or even have, you know, after-school time, some, you know, conversations with some of our mental health people, or even paras or support staff. So we are looking at, you know, we are looking at all of that, Jen, but, you know, in these beginning days, we're not, we're not going to penalize people.
Okay. And you had mentioned about like the small breakout groups. Are you guys going to do that automatically, or is that only going to happen if a teacher reaches out?
Oh no, that'll happen automatically. It's just at the beginning, there's a lot of getting-to-know-you activities and community building, and again, the teachers are getting to know the kids, and the kids are getting to know each other. But they, you know, classroom teachers have already done breakout groups with kids, or sent certain kids back to the waiting room to say, "Okay, now you're going to work on..." I was in a class today, and they were drawing a picture of, you know, their favorite place to read. So it was like, "Okay, we're going to take you kids, and you're going to go back to the waiting room, and you're going to draw your picture." And then the teacher met with a small group so that they could talk through their picture, share what they were going to write about, and all of those things. So that's already happening, and it'll happen more and more, again, as we get to know the kids. And as we go into the longer days, those academic blocks will be a little bit longer, so there will be a mini lesson, time for some independent work, as much as that can be, especially with the little ones. And then small groups will happen during that, so hopefully that helps.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think to add on to that, I'm finding that it's not just a lot of screen time. For us, it's just been a lot of sitting. And so the mornings are just long because it's a lot of sitting, and I think I am hopeful that as the academic lessons become longer, and then the independent lessons become longer, you know, that'll break that up a little bit. But that's more of something that I'm finding, the sitting part in conjunction with the screen, because you used to be able to get up and, you know, you'd go to your reading corner, you'd come back, or you'd go book shopping, you know, just others, just small kind of movements around. So at home, we are troubleshooting that to the best of our ability with stand-up desks and, you know, wireless headphones and things like that. But that's kind of, the conjunction of those two things are kind of for some of the littlest ones, where those two meet is where I'm fine, you know, having some of my most concern.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, Ruth, and I think as much as we sent out, and you're probably so sick of my letters and the teacher letters or whatever, but as much as we sent out all these letters to say, "Okay, let's get the kids prepared, let's have all their materials right there," when you think about an actual classroom, like, right, my book box is way across the classroom. So when we, you know, after we do the reading lesson, then it's sort of like, everybody go back to your seat, and, you know, on the way, get your book box. So maybe we even look at things like that, just like you said, Ruth, it's like, so if, you know, if I'm doing school in my room, it's like, yeah, instead of having my book right there, maybe it's, "Yeah, my mom puts my book across the room." So it's sort of like, everybody get up and go across the room and get your book, or whatever, because I do agree, it is, you know.
Yeah, it's the, it's the two things working together that's, you know, they're already little and can't sit still anyway.
Right, right, yeah, and it's hard to embed that in. And with some kids, it's sort of like, if we send them off to get something, then it's like, "Hello, hello, please come back." It's valid.
Appreciate the fact that mine told me school ended 10 minutes before it really did.
There you go, see? I love it.
Kathy, I was going to ask what, Deb, I'm surprised you didn't ask, the staffing issues, and also just to make sure that your school was ready for students on Tuesday.
Are you kidding me? We're so ready. Please, kids, please, please. All of our certified positions are filled. We do, we are working on a couple of para positions, there were some last-minute, you know, leaves and retirements and things like that, but all of our certified positions are filled. So we're in great shape, and we cannot wait to have the kids in. We're so excited.
Okay, great. Can I just ask one general question? The whole idea, when kids come back, the whole idea of tents, has that been settled?
No. So the tents that we purchased didn't have a wind rating, and so we set one up in the back to have the, some various town officials come in and take a look at it. As it happened, the day that we had all of that wind and rain, I think maybe a week ago or so, the combination of the wind and rain collapsed that tent. So we're sending those tents back, and we're now trying to source tents through some local tent companies, so we're still in the hunt here.
Kevin, are we renting, or are we looking to purchase?
We are looking to get the safest, most affordable tents we can, whether it's rent or purchase.
Perfect, because if we rent, is the liability, I mean, I'm sure, I won't even ask it. All right, perfect.
Right, right. Okay, but the kids can still go, are planning to go outside for pieces of the day, you know, with or without tents?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And one more question, and I think all the board members share this one, is concern over substitutes, and maybe that's for Maria. She had described at the last meeting, not having enough and/or, you know, perhaps the compensation. And I know, Kevin, you said, "Well, the compensation is actually fairly close," but what is the pool like for subs, and is there something the district could or should be doing to get more, or do we need more?
We do. Thank you for, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you for asking the question. And just to give you a preview for what we plan to present next week, we would like to share some ideas for increasing our substitute pool. As I've shared in the past, on a good year, we are short of subs because there's a shortage of substitutes across the state. This year in particular, we are facing a shortage because a number of our substitutes are not planning to return because of the pandemic, and as many of you might imagine, a number of our substitutes are retirees and are in an age group that would be considered a higher risk. So a number of them have shared with us that they intend not to return, at least for this year. We've also lost some subs, and again, just to preview what I'll be sharing next week, when we look at our building subs, we had a number of building subs report that they would not want to commit to us because we weren't intending to commit to them for the entire school year. So that is a change in our practice, and they are looking elsewhere to other districts that are going to commit to them for the entire school year. And in fact, one neighboring school district is offering healthcare for this year only as a way to attract substitutes and retain them. So we're going to need to change our strategy as it relates to hiring and retaining subs. We have looked at what the going rate is in the DIRG, we are consistent with that. However, again, I think it might be important for us to consider looking at ways to make the position more appealing to people. We've gone and advertised in a number of different areas, you know, we do our typical postings, we've advertised locally, we've joined a number of job boards at area graduate schools and universities and things like that. So we will need to do some things to make the position, I think, more widely publicized, but also more appealing to people, and we're going to need to change our strategy, or at least I'd like to recommend changing our strategy as it relates to the building subs. So I will be presenting a plan for that, a proposal, that I would like the board to consider next week.
All right, well, thanks for that heads-up, and we'll look forward to that. And anything you can send us ahead of time would be great too, so we could be prepared.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. Debbie, before we transition to Andrea, just on the note of building updates, I was in touch with Brian Reynolds, our food services manager, today, and he sent me some information that I passed on to the principals, as well as our PTA presidents. We're looking for all of our parents who intend to purchase lunch through the schools for their children to create and utilize a Nutrislice app. So that information is all on our website. I'll make sure that our principals and I'll ask our PTA presidents to communicate that as well, but that'll be a really important key activity for parents if they intend to have their children purchase lunch at school.
And now can we hear from Andrea?
Good evening, everyone, and sorry for my lighting. I look like I'm about to tell a horror story, which I am not.
Well, you look like you're sitting in your car.
I am sitting in my car. I continue to be extraordinarily proud and inspired to serve the teachers and parents and students with disabilities of Wilton. I am amazed at what I'm seeing every day happen for kids. We continue to work, you know, the focus of our work, as it has been since March, is to continue to focus on our relationships with each other, to engage in meeting the needs of students, to implement their full IEPs in this strange, oops, sorry, and difficult time. But we are implementing IEPs as they are written, albeit somewhat modified right now in the full hybrid, in the full remote. We can't wait for the kids to come back. We have, we know what it was like to have our face-to-face CSY kids come, so we know what it's going to feel like on Tuesday, and we can't wait for everybody to feel the same joy we felt that day. It will be both a breath and a breath of fresh air for everyone to see each other, to be with each other, and to have that same moment we experienced back in July, and we can't wait to see our kids again. We continue to work through whatever struggles and issues we have, one student at a time, one child at a time, one program at a time. Our technologies are up and running and working, we continue with presence learning, we're working with Schoology, we're embedding all of these things within the Schoology and Zoom. Our teachers and related services people, our paraprofessionals are all working incredibly hard to engage students, to keep students engaged, to work with families, to solve real problems in real time, and we continue to ramp up and roll out all the new technologies that are happening each and every day. I can, I am extraordinarily proud to serve these people. These teachers are working so hard, the parents are working so hard, and the kids are working so hard. But they're learning so much about who they are and how resilient they are, and how creative and innovative they can be. So I continue to be very, very proud to serve them, and we'll continue to work with each and every one of them to make this work in whatever iteration, and whatever happens over the next days, weeks, and months. We're excited to see what's about to happen and to engage. I am working on some, a proposal, I'm working with staff and administration right now, and soon to involve parents as stakeholders for some of our most complex kids, so you'll be hearing from me soon with a proposal for how to better serve those kids when we go from hybrid to full-remote or back and forth, as we may have to do during the course of the year. So stay tuned for that, and I hope you'll be able to support us as we do something very creative for some of our most vulnerable kids, pre-K through 21. So I'm hoping you'll be able to support that when it's ready for primetime. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Yeah, Andrea, is Genesis is ready to go back, right?
Genesis can't wait to go back. Oh, good God, they can't wait. They're chopping at the bit to go back, the kids are ready. We have some kids who have to quarantine due to some travel, but they're ready. We're ready to go.
All right. We, I assume that we've done everything in Trackside that we needed to do from a safety and health standpoint, mitigation standpoint, Trackside is prepared and ready?
Yes, we've worked with Trackside, and we've worked with our own custodial staff. We have plans and protocols and things in place. We'd like a tent, because we like, you know, we do a lot of outdoor work to begin with, and we'd like a tent, but we understand what's happening, and we're being patient. We, you know, we'd like some more outdoor space, some usable space during inclement weather, but we do spend a fair amount of time out in the world, at this time of year particularly, so we're excited, we can't wait to see our kids, they're excited to come. We're ready to go.
We'll have, we will have the entire Genesis group that. We're not doing a hybrid or cohort thing with Genesis, is that correct or not?
We're bringing all of the students back, four days a week, for a slightly shortened day, eight to two, so that the staff can have some planning and mitigation and cleanup time between cohorts, between Genesis and the Trackside kids, so there could be some deep cleaning, but we'll have the kids four days a week. Yeah.
That's great. That's fantastic. Okay, good news. Great.
And how are you guys, how many, just to, for everyone, how many kids is that total that you'll have four days a week?
Right now, we're starting with 17. We anticipate we'll be up around 25 very shortly.
So you're doing 25 kids, four days a week?
Yes. We're not doing 25 yet. We anticipate we'll be up to 25 very shortly, and we'll be doing them four days a week, but we're spreading out, we've taken all of Trackside, so we're spreading out across Trackside.
Okay.
Inside and out.
All right, good news, good news.
So do you have the six feet of difference, six feet of distance?
Yes.
In Trackside with your 17 kids?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And what's your timeframe for that, Andrea? When you say shortly, do you have a certain date that you're expected to do that?
Right now, we have, I think we have four or five students who must quarantine due to some travel, recent travel, so they won't be with us, they'll be full-remote. And then we have a couple of other kids whose parents have chosen full-remote for now, but want to see how it goes, and we anticipate that they'll be coming back to us.
And then my question is, not only for Genesis, but all of the support services, how is your staffing looking? Do you have vacancies, or are you okay?
We are good. We were very lucky. We had a great pool of candidates for our vacancies earlier. We have one position, a part-time social work position, that we are 99% ready to make an offer on. We're just checking references now, and hopefully that person will be with us within the next couple of weeks.
So Kevin, I have a question. If Genesis is able to have 24 kids back, four days a week, does that, how does that bode for the rest of the schools? Is that just because of spacing issues?
Difference is, you've got four instructors over there, and you have the entire footprint of Trackside, so the kids are spread out, so they're still meeting that six feet of social distance. You know, for us, in our main, kind of mainstream classrooms, remember, the average square footage is about 900 square feet, so with half a class present, we can achieve six feet of social distance. With a full class present, our capacity to achieve social distance is reduced from six feet to three feet. That's really...
And that's, I'm sure, included in the students who have chosen, the families who have chosen to do remote regardless? Does that bring class sizes down significantly, or no?
Say significantly, I mean, it brings them down, you know, you figure you have, struggling to remember the numbers off the top of my head, you might have, you know, a reduction of, you know, one, two, or three per class across the district, so it does free up some space, but, you know, we'd still be organizing in a way where we wouldn't be able to achieve a full six feet. And so I think that's, you know, as we get into the next couple of weeks here, and certainly it's all of our desire to try to welcome all of our students back into our classrooms. What's, you know, really important for me in these next couple of weeks, beginning Tuesday, is our ability to test our, the effectiveness of our mitigation strategy. So all those things that we're training around and reinforcing, we'll be able to collect some data on, and then, you know, come back to the board and, you know, offer some feedback and recommendations about how we need to proceed.
And what kind of data are you collecting specifically?
Well, so it's, you know, it'll be primarily holistic, because there is not, you know, any measure that's being recommended by the state, but we want to understand extent to which students are able to wear masks through the day, and, you know, how well do our mask breaks work? So are they, you know, able to tolerate the wearing of masks for the time that they're in the school? How well can we... How well can we manage, obtain the social distance parameters we've set up? So both within and outside the classroom as they're moving, particularly at the secondary level, moving from class to class, or, you know, if they're moving for lunch or recess or something, can they effectively keep a safe space? How well are we keeping up with hand sanitizing? And then certainly, you know, alongside all of those measures, we'll be watching very carefully our community transmission rates.
And Kevin, it's probably a good time to, to let people know that, and remind people that in our Board of Ed goals that we, we approved, I don't know, it's not, it's not months ago, it's only weeks ago. There were about 10 of them. But it includes reviewing the models that we're employing at least every three weeks, certainly for the beginning months of school. So that will probably, that does necessitate another meeting to keep on that schedule. September, I'm going to get the date wrong. I want to say September 17th. And just hearing the energy about all the, from the principals about how they can't wait to have the kids back, I can't hear in the background, but I'm sure the parents are jumping up and down with the same, with the same energy and enthusiasm, to say the least. So the sooner we can look at the models, review the models, and determine as soon as possible, to the extent that we can start bringing a full, open model to bear. And again, our methodology is to look at it school by school. So. Okay.
Can I have a question regarding that? So there's some other districts that have already gone back full time. Is there a way that we can possibly look at how they're doing and maybe move up our timeline? Or are you really trying to stick to what you're planning?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. And certainly, I mean, in fact, tomorrow, I, I've been meeting Friday with the superintendents in the region, and I know a number of the districts around us, Ridgefield, Duquesne, and I think maybe at this point, Darian might have invited some students back. So we'll be getting an update on, you know, how that's gone from them. And depending on what they share, I mean, that could certainly influence our thinking here. But as I, you know, stated, what's important to me is, you know, really just ensuring that the training's in place. And, you know, especially since if we're thinking about moving to having all kids back, we need to make sure all of those other mitigation strategies are as solid as we can make them. And so I think that's just going to take a period of time to assess.
Okay.
Well, we're nothing if not flexible, and we are, it seems like, meeting weekly. So we'll have all sorts of checkpoints, certainly during this, this month of September. We're meeting for the next two weeks, three weeks in a row. So we'll have lots of opportunity to, to assess. So thanks for being on top of it. And you can just feel everybody's desire to do as much as possible. But obviously, safety is, and health and safety are still our top priorities. Okay, thank you. Is there a little bit of good news around athletics?
Thank you. So yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen.
Sorry. Before we jump to athletics, I have two technology questions, and I have one question.
Of course.
Let's do kindergarten first. Kevin, can you just explain, if we've had a lot of questions or a lot of comments wherever we've been about why we did not choose to do AM and PM kindergarten? Can you share why our district decided not to do that?
Yeah, and we're not alone in that decision. The issue for us, if you think about our strategy, right, we're, one of the, one of the strategies for us is to have the opportunity to clean and disinfect our school buildings in between cohorts. And so there were really kind of two factors with the AM and PM kindergarten scenario. One was the amount of time we would need to effectively clean and disinfect classrooms. Having cohorts on the same day just doesn't permit the amount of time that we believe we need. The second piece was the, the cost of running buses, of just running an extra loop.
Okay. Thanks. My two technology questions. First is, I guess a lot of kids are getting locked out, or not getting locked out, they're getting kicked off their Zooms, and then when they try to get back in, they don't automatically get in, so they go into a waiting room, and then they have to wait for a teacher to recognize that they're in the waiting room. Is there a way to make that not happen?
Well. Waiting room. I'll let Fran and Eric can kind of weigh in on the, the first piece, the Zoom piece. But for my money, having the waiting room feature is essential to ensuring the safety of the virtual classroom. Today, I heard of an instance of some kind of Zoom bombing taking place at the high school where whoever the Zoom bomber person was used some kind of racial epithet. And I, I think yesterday or the day before, we might have had a similar instance. And so the waiting room is really key so the teacher can identify accurately the students in the class and allow them into the classroom. So it's, it's a key feature. But Fran or Eric, do you want to weigh in on the other piece with Zoom?
So there's been, and I'll have Eric also add to this, there's been a number of issues with Zoom in terms of just really getting it up and going and, and having students navigate it. One has been that since it's been all remote only, in some cases, there's been an attempt at using an actual Zoom app, and we're web-based. And that's, that's been kind of an issue that, that we've identified. What you're talking about, Jen, is they're actually getting in, and then they get kicked out. Not sure why that happens, except for connectivity issues that may have to do with home or, you know, whole host of different reasons. And yeah, in fact, they do have to log back in and get back in through the enabled weight room, which we've added in, as Kevin was saying, as a security measure.
Great. Is there an extra way to maybe notify a teacher that there's somebody that's been kicked out and stuck it back in the waiting room?
It, it appears in the Zoom participants. What's difficult, and I'll just have to be, you know, in, in my experiences, if you're presenting, which a lot of our teachers are doing, they may be showing a slideshow, they may be in Schoology. The bar where you actually can see the participants coming in is harder to see. So, you know, there are some tricks and strategies we can share with the teachers on that.
I think that would be great. I think I'm just, people are finding that they're getting kicked out of like 10 and 15, 20 minutes of class, and then by that point, you've already missed so much.
Yeah, yeah, no, makes sense. Sure.
So thank. My other question is, how are you guys doing in terms of responding to parents or students who are having technology issues?
Great question.
So I think both Eric and I can speak to it. Obviously, as our first week of remote learning, and it's the first time that we're doing this in the way that we're doing it, first week of school. You know, we had a lot of challenges that we had to overcome. I have to say that after our first day and even our second day, we were, we were not, we weren't surprised, but we were happy to find out that there weren't as many issues as there were. But regardless of that, we've had quite a few calls in, and we've been making through the list of Schoology issues, Zoom issues, app issues. And then there's a variety of things that are hard for us to do on the first try because we find out that, you know, maybe we thought it was one thing, but it's really something different. Jen was alluding to the fact that we found out yesterday that parents may have been using their account instead of the student's account, which is a whole different view, and they weren't getting the functionality in Schoology that you normally would. Then we started finding out that there was a variety of different URLs being used for our Schoology domain, which is wilton-schoology.com, which in some cases was pushing kids out to a California site that actually has the Wilton Public Schools type of domain as well. So as we're working through these and we're finding the fixes, it's becoming easier, but it takes us a while sometimes to work through that issue.
Okay.
Additionally, we normally set up all of the student Chromebooks in our district on our network with our systems where we control the access, we control the Wi-Fi, we control the network. We had students pick up new devices and go home and connect, and we've had some challenges with parental settings on routers, older routers, limited connectivity in some, some areas of the houses that students are in. And we've just had to work with families to try and correct, correct some of those connectivity issues. Usernames and passwords, which normally are handed out in class the first day or through the LLCs, were emailed out. And so we had a variety of, of, you know, challenges getting everyone logged in the, the first day. So we've been continually working on those. And again, as we identify some of the problems, we're able to come up with sort of a master list of, of quick fixes and repairs and, and get those out to families as, as quickly as we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. One last question. When our families ask a question, what's the response time hoping to be from our staff?
I, I would say on, on the, on the hardware pieces, we're getting back to families as quickly as we can. It really depends on the number of tickets that are coming in, as how quickly we can respond to the families.
Eric, do you have an average? Do you have any sense of kind of what the turnaround had been, or is it, is it different?
The first day, our turnaround was probably an hour and a half, two hours to get out to families, perhaps longer. It's been quicker in the last few days as the, the ticket numbers have come down.
I would say the same thing. The first day, we were overwhelmed with the number of increase and issues. And the, the tech support staff really was our own staff within central office and within our LLC team, who've done a fabulous job. But as you can imagine, they're endless. Sometimes they require us actually making contact with the family, actually Zooming with them, having them show us what they're doing with their devices. You know, if you can imagine what we normally do in a, in a week where our LLC team is in the facility and, and students are going in and showing them what the problem is, and we're able to fix that in real time, we've had to do this, you know, through an online remote situation, which does take us the time. So I appreciate everyone's patience, and we're working through our list.
Thanks, guys.
Can I, towards the end, can I just ask a quick question? Is there a way, as a parent, I have greatly appreciated the emails with the Plan B in them? Like, if for some reason Schoology's not using, use, you know, use the Zoom link from here. But for the little ones who don't have email, is there a way that that Plan B page can be, like, put someplace where they can access it? Because if I, if my little one is logged into her Chromebook, I don't have access to my Gmail on her Chromebook. So just maybe some type of fix that we can just think about that? If it's, you know, in a Google Classroom, live somewhere there, or something like that, that it can be, the Plan B can be accessed from the child's Chromebook without having to go into the parent's email?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think we have to, we have to look at that, about how, how best to do that. So I don't know a, a ready answer tonight.
No, that's fine, but just something I think it would make the transition between Plans As and Bs and whatever, just.
And I, I know parents already get lots of updates, but Fran, I found the, the update you sent out helpful in terms of putting in, putting into perspective, you know, the common challenges that happened this week. And so rather, that, that would help parents, perhaps. I don't know. You'd have to figure out with the principals if it's information overload or not, but just get a sense of how we're doing in technology. They're not, they're not alone, you know, what the response time you're aiming for and all that kind of information in an update form might be helpful. So anyway, thank you. Everybody's on mute, so I'm going to assume it's okay to go to athletics now?
Great.
Is it okay?
Just very, very. Earlier this morning, Barry Bogel, our town health director, and I spoke, he did approve the plan to restart sports. So what that means for us is that our coaches and athletes can return to play per the first phase of the CIAC schedule, which is conditioning and sport-specific skill development. So they're going to, I think we have some teams who are going to get back in action beginning tomorrow, and I imagine some will start Saturday, and then the remainder will pick up, you know, beginning Tuesday. And so the coaches will put those schedules out. So I think that's just in terms of getting our athletes back into the conditioning activities. Again, that's really, really good news for us. We do not yet have any kind of updates from Glenn Legnari and the CIAC with respect to where they've come together or not with the Department of Public Health on some of those higher-risk sports, volleyball and football. So we await that news.
Okay, I think that's good news. Is there anything to add, Chris? Or do board members have questions, comments?
The coaches are excited to get going. The, the teams that are delaying until Tuesday, it's because they were expecting to start on Tuesday anyway. So either they had plans for the, for the extended weekend or the kids. But others are ready to go. So, yeah, we're ready.
Maybe I misunderstood. So the decision for football and volleyball through the CIAC has nothing to do with the conditioning that can still start on Tuesday?
Right. It's all safe conditioning. It's low risk. So they're not, they're got, they're not going to be padded up and tackling each other in, in football and volleyball. They're actually still discussing, so they're going to be spaced out quite a bit, especially in a field house. So, and we also have an outdoor court that we're going to be utilizing somewhat, too.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else on athletics we need to know, Kevin or Chris?
I think that's, the, the news really is that we can resume.
That's great.
Room conditioning activities. And so, you know, the plan really stipulated all of the mitigation strategy that we've discussed, and our coaches are certainly well aware of the plan. And, you know, it's critically important that the coaches, you know, follow through, which I have confidence that they will.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next item is moving into the policies, and these are possible action items. Kevin or the policy committee, do you want to sort of take us through one by one? And if memory serves me correctly, Kevin, the board approves the policy, and we can comment or on your regulations, but we don't actually approve regulations. We approve the policy language.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. So the, the first one on the list is 6141.321. You saw that last week. That's the Student Responsible Use Policy. We had updated that to include the information on real-time video instruction expectations as well as blended learning. You'll recall that, you know, there was some initial concern from some parents of our younger students, just not fully clear on, you know, the parameters around managing their kids at home. Last week, once we clarified that, I didn't get any further follow-up conversation. I think now we've had four days of parents working with their kids. And I think I, there might have been a single isolated issue that I'm aware of that, that principal or teacher was going to take care of. But this policy, as far as I'm concerned, is ready to go.
Kevin, what number was that?
This is 6141.321. It's the Student Responsible Use.
Yeah, I just had a question about that with the headphones. At one section, it says they're required. Hold on, I can pull it up and look. And then later down, it says that they're recommended. So it says, anyhow, if you know what I'm talking about, is there any way that, you know, some of these kids just really don't feel comfortable wearing headphones all day long?
I'll, I'll let Fran speak to that because we, we talked last week, and, you know, what she flagged for me as we were talking about this was the, just the, the different environments. And so I think, you know, it's, headphone use still really be, you know, episodic is appropriate, but Fran, do you want to just pick that up?
Sure. I think the, the difference is that in some cases, if the teacher is using Zoom to make connections between students that are onsite and remote, to prevent feedback and some of the audio issues that we've seen, the headphones would be required as part of that. They're recommended, obviously, for home, and that would be up to the student and, you know, the family as to whether they would be used or not. But they're just the best. But they're just the best practice. Some people use them all the time when they're home, others don't. But within a class, what we were really trying to do was make sure that we had the best audio quality that we could have in that situation.
I'm just wondering if we can change it where it says, students will use headphones, section 11, to, you know, based on, it just sounds very like required. And I just don't want there to be any gray room with the policies.
So your proposal is to, so where it just says use headphones?
Where it says expectations for students from video conferencing, it proposes to add that students will use headphones. That just sounds like a requirement. So to say, you know, based on the teacher's, I don't know the exact term, but to make it so that it's required sometimes for audio reasons to hear correctly versus it's required that the student has to wear headphones.
Yeah, all right. So you, yes, it does. I understand. And I think, you know, discretion and certainly teacher judgment and teacher should make a lot of sense. So.
Could, could we put it, keep, could we leave it teacher discretion?
That would make sense.
Yeah, because sometimes, sometimes it's not just the audio field, feed. It may be some other reason. So I think teacher discretion should rule the day.
Okay. Okay, so I'm, we can certainly make that change. Yep, so.
Okay, so with that language change, are there any other comments or questions? All right, is there a motion to approve that policy with the, with the language recommended by me or recommended?
No move.
Thanks, Mandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that policy is approved. Thank you.
Great.
And the next one?
Right, so the next one is 5114. This is the, our suspension, expulsion and removal from class policy. You also saw this last week. We updated this in two important ways. One was to expand the reference of school and classroom to include virtual educational environments, whether synchronous or asynchronous. And then the second was item number 25. That just expands the standards governing suspension and expulsion to include acting in any manner that creates a health and/or safety hazard for staff members, students or the public, regardless of whether the contact, conduct is intended as a joke, including but not limited to violating school district health and safety protocols developed in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic, such as but not limited to physical distancing and mask wearing. And then the last addition was around the use of computer systems, including email distance learning platforms, instant messaging, text messaging, blogging, the use of social networking sites and other forms of electronic communications to engage in any conduct prohibited by this policy regulation.
Questions, comments, clarifications from the board?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Thanks, Mandy. Is there a second?
No second.
All right, thanks, Glenn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that policy is approved or updated. Thank you.
All right, so the next three are new policy. Well, there, one's a new, not a new policy, but a proposed new change. So I'm going to share my screen and then I'll walk you through the work that the policy committee did. Let's hope you can see it. All right. Are you seeing my, are you seeing the policy?
Yes.
Great, so this is the regularity of attendance, 5113. And we're proposing just a couple of changes here. One, we, this, in this recommendation came from Shipman and Goodwin, our attorneys, who often advise on policy matters. First piece here, we are looking to expand our capacity to track symptoms. So what we're asking for, you know, any absence that's due to student illness, for any sign note that comes in, the note includes specific symptoms that are exhibited by the student. And the purpose there is really to just monitor any, the spread of COVID-19. The policy committees, we discussed this earlier this week. They also noted that sometimes, you know, parents will call and mail. And so we'll ask parents, the best that they're able to do is to just, you know, leave a description of symptoms. And then, you know, for our nursing staff, you know, we may have nurses call parents back if they need some more information, just so we can continue to track symptoms. That was one piece. And then, there's a second piece here. And then that, the piece is just a, a note that the State Department of Education guidance around attendance does continue to evolve and that this policy may be changed as the guidance from the State Department of Education updates its own, its own attendance policies and regulations. What this policy doesn't address is one of the questions that came up earlier that raised about, you know, our flexibility with attendance. And I'll just repeat what's already been said, that we have been and certainly will be flexible with attendance, certainly in light of, you know, student potential issues with logging on or connectivity or whatnot. So it'll really be important for the student and parents to connect with teachers and the buildings, just so we can, we can track and monitor any of those, you know, attendance concerns that may arise. Gretchen or Ruth, is anything else you want to add about this?
Yeah, and I think we also wanted to kind of ask the community to say that in light of the current health situation, if for some reason your child is not feeling 100%, but can do school, but perhaps it's best to keep them home, you can keep them home and let them participate in a remote fashion. But so we're able to kind of track what's going on with illness in the community, it would be really helpful if you kind of called your child out remote.
Right, so the communication piece is going to be, it's always important, but in this specific domain, it's especially important.
Kevin, will we get to the point that if someone calls in sick, that will be, so that just leave a message? Like I would say a bunch of moms aren't thinking and you just call in saying, my child's sick today. Will we be following up with the families to say, could you just give us some more information?
That would be the expectation. So, you know, whether it's an attendance secretary or, you know, perhaps a school nurse, you know, the interest here is to try to just, to the best that we're able, track and monitor symptoms. That's a very important part of our, you know, community wide health.
And Kevin, this was.
Sorry, Debbie, you're.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was reviewed and written by our lawyers?
Correct.
Okay. All right, because, all right, because it might raise some privacy issues, but it's been vetted by them?
Correct.
Okay. Any quest, other questions or comments? I'm not seeing everybody on the screen. I don't know if you are, Kevin.
I have everybody. I don't see, I don't see any hands in the air. So.
All right, so is, you need a motion to approve this, am I right?
If you're, if you're ready to take action on it tonight, yes, we need a motion to approve the changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the changes to policy? I forget the number.
5113.
5113, thank you.
No move.
I think that was Gretchen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition or any opposed? All right, that's also approved. Thank you. And the next one?
So the next one, let me, I'll share my screen again.
Is this the visitors one?
Visitors policy, correct. So this is a new policy. And this we're adopting in light of COVID-19. But here, I'll just, for the sake of everybody, I'll just read it short. But the Wilton Board of Education welcomes visitors to school buildings. Upon arrival, all visitors and observers must comply with any and all applicable building security procedures, including but not limited to utilizing security budgets for access, complying with requests for photo identification, reporting directly to and signing in and out of the visitors reception area at the school office, prominently displaying visitors badges or other identification required for visitors to the school buildings, limiting access to those areas of the buildings and grounds for which the visitors or observers have authorized access and complying with directives of school officials at all time. All visitors and observers permitted into school buildings or on school grounds must comply with all school health and safety protocols in place at the time, including any health screening protocols. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the board may limit or restrict visitors based on the guidance of federal, state and local authorities. So that's.
Yeah, Kevin, I, I had, when I printed this out, I have two different policies. I had the longer version, which goes into great detail about the process. This came as a separate policy, this paragraph.
This is the policy. The other piece is the regulation that accompanies the policy. That just stipulates the procedures.
Regulation. Well, they both say policies and regulations, so I, okay, all right.
Yeah, this, the shorter version's the policy that we need to approve and then the regulations we can look at. But it's up to, in question, but it's up to Kevin. We don't, they don't need to be approved.
Yeah, okay.
Kevin, you, you saw my earlier language thing. It's, it's kind of funny because you say the Wilton Board of Education welcomes visitors to its school buildings.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it is you kind of don't. So, and so I would just sort of highlight, maybe put that last sentence, it's in the second paragraph. And pull it forward to that follow, you know, however, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the board may limit blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to make the change as long as the policy committee is comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a style thing. It's just kind of funny. We welcome you, so not really. So I mean, I think people need to understand that obviously we need to restrict visitors during this time to the extent that we can. Okay, is there a motion to approve it, moving, you know, just making that stylistic change with bringing that last sentence to following the first sentence?
No move.
Thank you, Mandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Glenn. All in favor? I can't see people, so.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's also approved. Thank you.
Great, okay. And so the last one for this evening is one that is also a new policy and set of regulations that we had, you know, talked about conceptually in the last several weeks. So this is policy 6114.82. It is the health and safety protocols related to the COVID-19 pandemic. This was also a policy recommended by our attorneys that our policy committee reviewed. So bear with me and just for the sake of clarity discussion, I'll read it for you. The Wilton Board of Education recognizes the importance of protecting the health and safety of students, staff and the community during the COVID-19 pandemic. The board thus directs the administration of the Wilton Public Schools to develop health and safety protocols consistent with applicable laws, rules, regulations, requirements and related guidance in the development of such protocols. Compliance with such health and safety protocols shall be mandatory for all individuals while on school property or participating in a school sponsored activity unless a legally recognized exemption or exception applies. Failure to comply with such health and safety protocols may lead to disciplinary action for students and staff and exclusion from school property or school sponsored activity for members of the community in accordance with applicable laws, rules, regulations and or board policies. The administration shall provide appropriate notice of such health and safety protocols, notice may be provided by way of an electronic mail, regular mail, website postings, student handbooks, employee handbooks and or any other appropriate methods. So that's the policy. And then why don't we take a look at the regulations since this is such an important one? So give me one second, please. There it is. Okay. Great, so back to the screen share. I lost my cursor. All right. Okay, so now you're viewing the accompanying regulation. And so, you know, again, I won't read this whole thing, but I'll just top line it for you. So that first paragraph's a summary of the policy and then just the regulations. So, you know, the first stipulations that students and staff must perform a self, a health self-assessment prior to leaving school. If they have any of these symptoms, they must notify the school immediately. If students and staff are experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 or have had close contact, they must return home or remain home. The face covering provision is one we're all familiar with. All individuals must wear protective face covering or face mask. And you can see the exceptions here. Unless you have a legally recognized exemption or you're taking a school sanctioned mask break. So we did make a note that, you know, per the CDC guidance, you know, masks with exhalation valves really aren't recommended and so they shouldn't be worn in school. We also now have new Connecticut DPH guidance and recommendations for the kinds of face coverings that are most appropriate. So in that guidance, the state's suggesting KN95 masks, surgical masks and cloth masks are all appropriate. What they're not recommending for use in schools are N95 respirators and that's because there is an ongoing shortage of those and those are really intended for healthcare workers. Net gaiters, bandanas or exhalation valve masks. And the question about net gaiters and bandanas came up and in that Connecticut DPH guidance, they do expound on it. And what they're speaking to, you know, they, they weren't saying, you know, these were kind of an outright no, not recommended. But they, in the guidance, they say these are questionable and it really has to do with the kind of fabric that is sometimes used for these things and the fact that they're single layer in many instances and not multi-layer, which when you read the guidance, you know, particularly cloth masks that are multiple layers are most recommended. So we're updating our proposed policy and regulation here to include that guidance. Moving on from face coverings, you know, social distancing is another very important mitigation strategy for us, cleaning.
Can I interrupt and just go back to masks before we leave it? So will students and families get that language?
Will, yeah. We just received the guidance from the DPH and so we'll be sending this out to, you know, everybody. It'll also be in the handbooks that go out.
Okay, and your email just showed up.
So Kevin, if somebody.
Kevin, your email just showed up. There you go.
Kevin, if, if somebody comes to school with one of these masks that are not recommended, will they be given another mask for the day and a note coming home saying, please don't wear this type of mask?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So we have a supply of disposable surgical masks and so we'll just replace the mask that we think is problematic with a surgical mask.
And then going back to the, the beginning of that, can we change it to say school grounds and not just school? The beginning of the whatever policy 51, I think it was 14 that you were just on? The first page, it says a lot of schools. Can we just make it say school grounds? Because for sports and such, if you're in the fields.
Yeah, schools and school grounds.
I mean, I don't know if that's common knowledge, but if you're, you know, playing sports on the field afterwards and you have any of these symptoms, I just hope that that encompasses it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, you're engaged in a school sponsored activity, you know, whether shores or on the moon, if it's school sponsored.
Doesn't matter where it is, yeah.
Perfect.
Policy and reg, yep.
All right.
Great, anything else on face coverings? So let me just, we'll come back and just look at the last piece of this here. So these are, you know, again, are, you know, very, hopefully widely understood mitigation strategies. So, you know, the hand washing and hand sanitizing provisions we've put in place, we speak to here as well as. as well as appropriate respiratory etiquette. So that's something, you know, hopefully all of our children are learning and they're being reinforced. With respect to transportation, it's also, you know, one of our policies that riding school buses, students or adults have to wear protective face coverings. They have to adhere to social distancing protocols. And then, you know, with the exception of, you know, very limited instances, students will need to, you know, only ride their own bus. And then certainly the travel by car, just asking people to follow, you know, arrival and drop-off procedures. And then the last piece is just with respect to the visitor, observers, and volunteers policy that we just reviewed. And so that just a simple statement that they need to adhere to our policies.
And Kevin, do we have anywhere that talks about the policy of following state guidelines for traveling?
Do you know, the, that is not written, he sent me that question earlier today and so I need to just, I need to have a brief conversation with Jessica Richmond-Smith about that. You know, I don't see an issue of including that, this relation. You know, these are things that, you know, generally we, we control on our school property or in our school activities. But let me speak to her about that and then, you know, I'll, I'll just come back to you on.
Yeah, I had asked that as well earlier. It's just, it just seems like, you know, the family and the students' awareness of when to self-quarantine.
Sure.
And not come on school grounds.
Yep, and that is, I mean, we, we do publish that in other documents as well. And it is a, you know, it is a executive order from the governor.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and it's in your regulation. We don't need to approve it. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ruth.
I was just saying, it does tie into the grounds for disciplinary action. If you, so while it's not, you know, the quarantine is not spelled out in the code of conduct, it is behavior that is covered under reasons for disciplinary action.
Yep. Yeah, so I'll, it's in the reg, I'll, I'll get some feedback and I'll just share, you know, whatever that recommendation is.
Yeah.
See even.
Okay, so you'll update us, but we can go ahead and approve the policy because that language is more general.
Correct.
Doesn't list the specific protocols. So are there comments on the policy, not the regulations, the policy language before I ask for a motion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the policy 6114.82?
So moved.
So moved.
Glenn, thank you, and I think Mandy was at a second?
Yep, a second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that, that's also approved. Thank you. And Kevin, that was the last one?
The last one.
Okay. So looking at the agenda, future business, our regularly scheduled meetings are there, but we will add a meeting Thursday, September 17th in order to follow our sort of prescribed three-week review process.
Deb, before we close, I just think that we should mention, and we don't have to discuss this tonight because it's already almost nine, but the multiple emails that we've gotten about the days of the cohort, so if we could put that on our next agenda. And I know if you look at the whole year, it, it does balance out, but it seems that, I went through and figured out each month, it seems October cohort A has a total of seven days and cohort B has a total of nine days. So I don't know if we can possibly just talk about that and come up with any ideas. I, for one, am really hoping that this doesn't even matter because we are all back in school every day, but I can send an email, but maybe Kevin, could we look into moving some of the professional learning days to Wednesdays? I know they're tied into Columbus Day, but just something that we could talk about in the next meeting.
We can certainly look at the cohort calendar again. Yeah, I think, why don't we just leave it at that? We can take, we can take another look at the agenda item.
Right, fair point. Okay, we'll put it on for the next meeting.
Thanks.
All right. Comments from the public. I know Gretchen, there were, I don't know if there were other comments left to read. I think there, there might have been. You're on mute, Gretchen.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No worries.
And during the meeting, so there's four altogether.
Okay. Do you, do you mind, Gretchen, you're just a little soft. Is there any way to turn up your volume or just move slightly closer? You were, yeah, louder at the beginning of the meeting.
Am I better now?
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, BOE. How is the Wilton Public School System, school and town of Wilton chosen to help keep our school community safe by requiring or even recommending that all student athletes be tested for COVID, both before starting athletics and throughout the season? Testing is free, readily available, and many students are taking steps to keep themselves safe. Why not rather than, thanks. Paula Cassaraki. And Shag Park.
Okay, Gretchen, you're still a little hard to hear.
Don't know if there's another way.
You know, you're right. If you stay right there, it works.
My big head now. Dear Board of Education, thank you for the hard work you have in, all invested in your efforts to make this school year a success for our children. My fourth and sixth graders are off to a great start and all has been incredibly pleased. They seem very engaged and comfortable in their remote learning days. My husband and I are so pleased. We know that this is due to large in part to the outstanding efforts of all of our teachers this year and to the excellent help to guide each and every one of the students during these challenging times. Their professionalism and obvious dedication to our children is crystal clear. Unfortunately, it is also clear that the plan for teaching the youngest learners like our kindergarten, kindergarten is not working out as well. This leaves my husband and me very concerned about the well-being of our kindergarten. To illustrate our concerns, let me start by explaining that the third day of remote learning has began with my son's uncontrollable tears and statements that included, "Mom, I can't do this again." "And mom, this is too long for me." "And mom, this school makes me feel sick." We always, we will always be the parents to guide our kids through discomfort and challenging times, knowing those challenges will make them better people. However, we also, our parents who know that this is part of our responsibility to provide others with input that will help them make the best decisions, especially when it comes to the health and well-being of our children. That is why we are reaching out to you today. I went to this week of remote learning with a positive mindset that quickly changed after day two. I soon realized that what my son was experiencing created an unacceptable way to be a kindergartner. Tech frustrations, the lack of any training for kids on Chromebooks, the noise, the lack of attention, not teacher's fault at all. She has been amazing. The amount of wait time, the inconsistent help from adults, the lack of movement for these little bodies, and most importantly, the inability for teachers to read emotions of all their students will be damaging to the children. This is not the way to launch our youngest learners on their learning journey. Kindergarteners will suffer this year if we do not get them into the building for at least a half a day at a time on a regular basis. It is clear that the upper grades could function academically, socially, and emotionally with what public schools has provided. We still have time to recruit kindergarteners so that the learning environment is developmentally appropriate for their growing minds and bodies. I implore your team to seriously reconsider, to consider reevaluating the plan for our kindergarteners. They desperately need the experience of in-person learning. If the expectation is to prepare our kindergarten students to transition successfully into first grade next year, there is no, there is a good chance that the current plan will make that impossible. This can result in lost months of learning. Our deeper, or deep, of deeper concern to me is that we will have squandered our opportunity to get the kids excited about learning and off on a positive development track before their minds, bodies, spirits. We can't let that happen. I understand this may require more than the district is currently set up to handle. As an educator myself, I
Gretchen, Gretchen, I'm sorry, that's gone well over the two minutes and I just want to be fair to everybody. So, thank you.
Megan Malay. Malay. Next. This one's a little bit long, too. Hello, we understand in these difficult times, adjustments have to be made and everyone, including parents, need to be flexible. However, we feel the need to share our disappointment in our school's leadership and decision-making maker. Not only were the schools not ready for school on the day one after given five months to repair the lack of thought put into each, into teaching our youngest students day two such a way during the first week has been incredibly disheartening. It's common sense that kindergarteners cannot learn by starting at a computer for hours on end. Five-year-olds have a naturally short attention span as it is. They're easily distracted and become incredibly bored throughout the day. E-learning in this environment for kindergarteners is untangible. And if it must be done due to the pandemic, a shortened grace should be considered and the CSDE recommendations will be followed. The SDE recommendations recommends districts should plan using a 50/50 rule, 50% synchronous and 50% asynchronous in a week of instruction. The CSDE also recommends groups of two to four to promote engagement and participation and groups of three to six to promote collaboration and discussion. This is the complete opposite of 18 five-year-olds waiting to be called on throughout the day, including during specials. An email recently went out stating that this will be incorporated in the weeks to come. The problem here is that you will have completely lost my child's interest by then. This should have been done already. The first week of school should have been fun and engaging though children want to log on to the computer in the morning. Instead, my son is complaining because he does not want to get on the computer. He asks 20 times throughout the day when school is over and I feel like I'm a broken record, constantly asking him to sit and pay attention. It's hard for us to believe that our leadership thinks this is the best way we can do. While this may not be every child's experience, I know plenty of others who have expressed the same concerns. If we are to encourage our children and learn and actually enjoy school, we should push for in-person classes five days a week for our youngest learners who need it the most. And if we're not ready for that, or if COVID cases rise and we are forced to close schools, then we should follow the guidelines provided by the CSDE. Either way, our leadership needs to be, needs to actually lead and make the appropriate changes. With the best interest of our children at heart, sincerely Matt and Jaclyn Dallow.
Okay.
I have one more. Oh, nope, that was one I'd already read. So no, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thanks everyone again for a rather long meeting. But, but really informative in terms of seeing the, the teamwork that's been going on and all the effort and a very honest assessment, the good, the bad, and the challenging left. So to Mandy's question, are you ready for next week? It sounds like it and we're really heartened to hear that. So we wish you, you know, all the luck in the world and you have our support and we will be back here next week. And thanks to our families as well. You've been terrific partners. So we'll be talking more about the kids in a, in a different model next week. So thank you and this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.